I mean Patrick's the only one there.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, which stands to the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Patrick for coming. I assume we have no business letting you speak and don't break the communication. Before I get into, well, I guess, report of boards and committee, there was a bunch of us that went in last week in honors our district clerk Deb Custody for district board. It was a wonderful dinner, celebrating a bunch of people, but particularly Deb. Deb was great, and Lori was a shining star, so we got to celebrate Lori. And Mark, you missed it, but you were a rising star. Well, we didn't get to celebrate you there, so.
And Mr. Penelope, they had nice little plaques as stars. We see, yeah, I think they started putting them up in the back.
Oh, yeah, I was thinking the boardroom, but, I mean, certainly my office, I could touch it every day on the way in, right? I don't know, I had a chance to see. I've had a chance to see the Deb's redone space in the office, and it's very, very nice, so she has a lot more area, so.
Maybe we should put it in your area.
We'll put it in the cat bed area. Not that office. There's a nice little sitting area now. We did have a Capitol Committee meeting this week. It was really a kickoff meeting, kind of starting to go through a list of the needs and wants, discussing the former building condition survey, getting the new building condition survey done. There's a meeting scheduled for November 1st right now to talk with Rick Ansey about what current debt service we do have and how our debt is cycling off, to try and start to put together different parameters for a project, looking at what it would be, let's just, for argument's sake, a 10, a 25, a 50, a 7, whatever, million-dollar type project, and how that would impact our finances. That would then help us determine of the needs and wants, what we can and can't do. So more to come on the Capitol Committee, it's early on in the discussion, so. Anyone else have a committee or board report?
The wonderful delegates in the last night. We're getting out today with results of the HSRA after the four that we talked about as a board, that were restored by the 12th, 15th. Discussion was 12 and four were redone, and four was written better. So I voted no on 12, and yes on four, but they vote yes. It goes all the way. Then the two that were raised to green initiatives, 15 was one that mandated action by school districts, and 11 was a little bit more vague. I voted no on 15, and that failed, no doubt. And what do you guess? Like I said, all the rest of the results are beginning to roll out.
Great. Anyone else?
What were they about? They were a kickoff.
Were there a lot of discussion, or were there any next to? Were there a lot of discussion, or were there any next to?
Yeah, there was a lot of discussion out there, babe. And there was a time in the runs of the corners, two minutes per person, 15 minutes solo on discussion. We hit the bell.
You're a shining star.
I said it was a.
No, he's a rising star.
He's rising, he isn't rising yet.
Lori's, Lori's.
He's shining.
It's like April 14th.
The Deb's district clerk of the year, so. We got a good trio over there.
Yeah, must be something on that side of the table.
Well, Deb will turn over the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. We got a chance to check out the remodeled courtyard prior to the meeting, so thank you for coming a few minutes early. I also invited Mrs. Flanagan, with your principal, to talk a little bit about Serve Day 2021. Welcome, Mrs. Flanagan.
Thank you.
Careful, I hear you're slipping over there.
This is Stager award me. All right, so this is, I'm so proud to be here, actually, to share this great thing that happened in our courtyard. So behind me, you'll see, it's just a running slideshow of the event. But the Serve Day all came to be with the fourth grade teacher, who is a member of the chapel. And the chapel during one of their congregations asked, you know, each year, we sort of partner with someone in our community to serve and to help the community in terms of how we care of what we can do. So she shared my contact information early June. And so over the summer, I communicated with the director of the chapel, and together we identified a great need, which has always been one of the bane of my existence, and that is the courtyard. Every day I walk by the space. I know that it's a space that really needs just beautification, a place that is an extension of the library, place for students to go and read. And it's also an interior space of the building, so as you saw, it's very difficult to get machines in there, to clean it out, to maintain it. Over the years, PTA has done the best effort that they can to maintain it, but it's just challenging. And so we identified the space, had several meetings, along with Custodial, our crew, and Mr. Rampatto, and worked with this team at the chapel to say, hey, this is a space we'd like to really change to help our students. Part of that vision that's been identified is shade. Courtyard gets full sun. Many teachers would like to go out there with students, but it's really cycling hot, and because it's interior, it doesn't get a lot of wind. So we knew that shade was something that we wanted to utilize, and you can see kids are there right now, using the space and loving it. But the Serve Day is something that, when they called, they said, you know, we'd really like to go to places that are within Amherst, which is where the chapel is located. Oftentimes, they would go out into the city of Buffalo, and they thought, let's look at our community here. So when they were given my contact, and they really wanted to say, well, what do you need? And, you know, I told this to Mr. Penelope at the onset, I said, I brought them into the courtyard, and I'm like, oh, it's overgrown, it's massive, we need to like, clean it out, and take it out, and do all this, and this is a really labor-intensive job. And I'm like, okay, okay, they're listening, they're listening. And I'm like, you know, this is something, and at that point, I don't know anything about the chapel, so I don't know really the manpower that they come with, and I said, we probably gonna need like, a lot of volunteers, like 40, 50 people. And they chuckled and said, oh, no, where is Mrs. Flanagan, we're gonna have like 200 people here. I was like, what? So as you can see, that many people did show up to volunteer, and not only did they, that was the before, you can see everything that they tore out, and the only way to get it out was manually by wheelbarrows, that they had to take down the stair, down the hall, all the way outside here, along the perimeter, outside to a dumpster. So it was very manual intensive, the amount of people that were here. But they also served the outlined community, which is wonderful. They knocked on the doors of the neighbors across the street and in the area and say, hey, you know, we're here with the chapel, and it's our Serve Day, do you have any landscaping needs? And they cut grass, they weeded, they landscaped, whatever the neighbor wanted, they would do. And so they were here really from 8:00 to 4:00. They set up a tent, made their own chili, served the volunteers, and they were just really the most gracious, kind, wonderful people that were here on that day, and they were just incredible to work with. And every time I went up to them, I said, oh, Mrs. Flanagan, thank you so much, thank you so much, thank you, thank you so much for what you're doing for our students and the school. And their response every time was, no, thank you, you know, thank you for allowing us to be here. So it was really incredible. And so our district really benefited from this, because not only did they clean, you know, they power washed the concrete, I mean, they edged, I said, I really like straight lines, can we get a edge? So they got the edger in there. But, you know, I had said, one of my visions is, wouldn't it be great to have shade and, you know, benches, like an outdoor classroom space? And then they had said, you know, we think we can do the shade. So Mr. Rampatto and I thought, really, this is, you know, this is big. And so they paid for it, they paid for the funds, they donated that, they came, they installed it the night before by digging a hole and pouring cement. So it was really, I can't speak enough about how incredible the gift, not only their gift of labor and time, but the gift of funding to purchase that for our school. So, you know, I really wanted to be here just to recognize them to the school board, you know, and, you know, to the community, that it's really incredible what they gave to us, Windermere, and to this surrounding community.
I love that.
It's really great.
Not having seen the courtyard before, and seeing it, it looked very nice out there, but now seeing the pictures of what it looked like, I could really tell the difference.
Oh, yeah.
How great it looks.
And it really did take all day, just the manual labor of it and the project of doing it, it really did take all day. That's, like I said, what it looked before. But they actually then had said, you know, if you need any future work done, we'd love to partner again with other Amherst schools, we'd like helping the schools on our Serve Day. And they organized, I really, it was amazing, they organized the entire thing, including us, myself, and Mr. Rampatto, and the custodial crew, who were here, you know, supporting them, they really did not have to do anything. It was truly amazing, so kudos to them, since they came.
Mrs. Flanagan, do you know about how many other houses that they, did they give you any assistance on that?
They said they were able to go around 10, 15 houses. They had teams that would go, you know, down Windermere, and then down the surrounding streets on Oxford and Cambridge.
That's awesome.
And I don't think we have any in here, but they did send us some. They used the aerial picture, they had their own drone, they had, you know, professional cameras there, and they took pictures of them going to other houses and helping in the community. It was really incredible.
Yeah.
And the food that they provided was free, and they said, oh, if neighbors come over into the tent, we want to feed the community. It was really incredible. Yeah, we were very fortunate, and I thanked Christina Randazzo every time that she was able to extend my contact information to them in order for this to happen.
Yeah, we've had some follow-up conversations with the pastor, who is willing to look at other opportunities to partner in the future, whether it's, you know, needs like this, or academic needs, or, you know, some kind of tutoring, or things among those sorts. So my last email exchange with the pastor was that his people would contact my people, they made Deb, and we were gonna set up a meeting to get together and talk about how we might continue the collaboration into the future. So it'll be a nice partnership for us, and obviously, they did a great job with the first project, and we're looking forward to future collaborations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keeping in the theme of good news, I have Dr. Shan here tonight to do part two of her presentation on curriculum updates. As you will recall, last evening, we were there to update you on elementary curriculum happening, and tonight she's here to talk about secondary or middle and high school curriculum updates.
Great, there's like dancing with the stars, I can sense it.
Congratulations to all of you. So as Mr. Penelope said, I'm gonna be updating you on the secondary curriculum updates. Typically, they would come and share with you, but for safety reasons, you get me. And I told them I would do my best to represent their work accurately, the reports that they gave me. So we're gonna focus on these three discipline areas and their work, although there's much more going on, the English Language Arts, Social Studies, and Mathematic curriculum work. So Kate, Mrs. Rapp, Kate Rapp is our curriculum leader, and she shared the following information about the work that they've been doing. So I'm sure as you can imagine, when you have a school year and a half like we've had, there's a high potential to get a fragmented curriculum with teaching in different models, with kids being in and kids being out. So we worked really hard this summer with several of the curriculum committees to align our curriculum so that we would have less gaps and the information the students have access to. And so we had vertical grade level meetings, which means we had fifth grade, we did this at the elementaries, but then we also, during the school year, at the end of the year, but then for the middle school and high school, we had fifth, all the way up through 12th grade, that came together and they met about the standards that they had covered and not covered, or covered but not in as much depth. Like maybe they would have done more of one type of writing genre, but they didn't do as much because they're running out of time with the situation that we had last year in the teaching and learning setup. So what they did was they delineated in a spreadsheet what standards they hit and at what level, and then from there, they identified goals for this upcoming year. And this is a continuous process. So that was a good communication tool that went, fifth grade even came over for an hour, and it informed sixth, and then sixth went to seventh, and all the way up through 12th grade. And hopefully, that will end with better alignment, that's the goal. So they're using all this vertical alignment information to plan out this entire school year. They are also using baseline data from students that they had some samples from last year, but they also started off the school year with each, one of them collecting samples of students' writing, and it's continuous ongoing assessment. You can't do it all upfront, as you go across and work across your units, you look at their standards, and to how the kids are able to implement and handle those skills and strategies. And then they're revising units to include the scaffolds the kids might need, and to change assignments in different ways. And I keep using the analogy with them of, it's like an accordion file. Our unit is normally this long, but if we do just-in-time teaching, just-like teaching, we just expand that, you know, a little bit more if we didn't quite get who the standards the way we would have typically done it. So that's what we're doing across the entire school year, is what ends up happening with that. The second thing they came to me and said they wanted to work on was, you know, although last year was a little difficult for us, we learned to use some digital tools and teach in ways that we hadn't tried before. Some of those things were good, some of those things we don't want to keep. But they wanted time to sit down together and talk about what digital resources and practices they wanted to keep, and which ones they probably thought they would not use as much for this 21, 22 school year. And so they're trying to blend these two, your typical teaching year to what last year was and take the good, leave the stuff that they didn't like as much. So they're working on that at that point in the summer and continuing to do that as well. So as I just said, it's a continuous practice. For example, on November 2nd, our superintendent conference days, they're looking at a new set of writing examples for the new units that are coming in, and they are revising their units again to try to see what they need to change. There's a lot of adaptation across the entire school year going on, K through 12, but they spend a lot of time looking at, how are our writing prompts work, how are the assignments, are they at the level they should be? Do we need to do more instruction so that they're prepared to do those different writing genres and think on critical levels? So that's our English Language Arts update, and that work will be going on through the whole year. Social Studies, our curriculum leader is Mr. Jones, and I've shared a little bit of this for the superintendent's update, but we are one of 50 schools, there is a pilot school for the Seala Civic readiness for New York State, and so that has been a major focus of their work over the summer and all year as well. And they also have changes in the New York State U.S. History and Government exams, which they were starting to prepare for when all of this happened and things got pushed off just ever so slightly. So they're still looking at those changes. So for the Seala Civic readiness, some of the outcomes of the work so far is, they had to first figure out, where do we start to implement this and how can we handle this given this current landscape of education right now? So they're starting it just with their senior class right now, and they are implementing with a small group, with the goal of eventually spreading this K to 12, but right now staying with our senior class. There's record keeping, there's points for New York State, RUBR, there's points for your civic knowledge and your civic service, and there's different ways to earn those points. So they needed to develop a record-keeping system to manage, you know, students' work as they flow through, because there's different classes that can earn new credits, there's different projects, there's volunteering, so they had to find a way to keep track of all these credits. So they have developed that and are ready to start implementing that this year. Ms. Ward is, Ann Ward is working with Jessica Carnes, who is our New York State liaison, and they meet every month, and with other districts in the area that are also pilot schools. They provide feedback, progress updates, and share ideas together, so that's also ongoing work. We will layer in our juniors after the June U.S. History and Government exams to start introducing to this, so then they go into next year, they'll be able to join in. So that's what they've done. And if you think about everything that's going on, this is amazing. This was done this summer and so far this school year, so I'm impressed with what they've been able to do. So their future work is they're gonna continue to develop the Seala Civic readiness, they would like to also make it so that it is open to as many students as possible, and they're thinking about also adding an elective to make it open for students, no matter if you're in advanced classes, if you're not in advanced classes, because you can provide civic service no matter what your interests are, so the question is, how do you provide that open space for them to come into? The future work for the U.S. History and Government is they have been developing assessment banks with multiple choice questions, constructive responses, and the enduring essay questions, and they're just continuing to call that and develop strong questions so that kids are in those, can think around those areas, and they have high-level questioning as they're moving throughout the year before they get to the exam. And they're also aligning their historical thinking that's continued, and also discussing possible elective courses. I hear a pattern here, elective courses. So moving on to math, Mrs. King is our curriculum leader there, they have a robust agenda as well. They too have the vertical grade level meetings that I spoke about earlier, and shared work across grade levels, identified gaps, and are also revising their curriculum. They had a lot of professional development on bridging learning gaps, just-in-time intervention with students. Active participation strategies is one of our essential elements for instruction. They have been working on this for three years. Sometimes math tends to lecture, and then tell you what to do, and then you do a problem, but there's very little discussion going on. And we know that discussion and active participation within classes will push thinking, right? Class pushes thinking, which is what it does, if it's good, if it's pointed talk towards a learning objective. So they've been working on taking their current lessons and saying, just that essential element, how do we start integrating that in more consistently across our units? That's, they're in their third year of that, it got stalled a little bit last year, but they picked it up again this summer. The Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards, as you can imagine, math has a lot of crossover windows, computational thinking, there's systems analysis, so they went through to see what they already touch on in their curriculum, so that when our Technology Committee later this year has an audit from all these disciplines, we can see where our gaps are, and we were already teaching to those standards before we have to implement that. They were also interested in Brainy Camp and Desmos, which are two software applications that they wanted to learn how to use with their kids, so they have spent some time learning those as well, and students have access. They're getting ready for the implementation of their new science test coming up very soon. We've been working on this for a while as well, at least four years since I've been here. So 3rd grade will do full implementation of the new math standards next year, the 22, 23 school year. We have one last finishing touch to put on the Probability and Statistic Unit, which we will finish on November 2nd, and they are good and ready to go. That's been a few years worth of work, and they're in a good place. Algebra is continuing to do the same thing, adapt and modify, look at their current practices, look at their content, and see how that matches up with the new standards, and then make new changes. Geometry will be in 24, 25, and then algebra 25, 26. So each year, we're just continuing to build up and work on these. They did what is on bullet two, discuss the curriculum changes, the content shifts, figuring out where they need to make their own changes. New York State is gonna come out with a math glossary for all of us to use, which is important to know, because they'll probably use those words in their assessment questions. So you can understand a concept, but semantically with a different word, you might understand what you're doing, but not understand it if you're not using their language. So it'd be really important for us to know what that language is, so that we can show what we do know. And then also some New York State projects on modeling in math, in history and math, or culturally responsive teaching, that they've heard about, didn't do any major work with those. So the outcomes, I always tell them, we're doing this work in the summer, what's the outcome, where are we going with this, what's our product? And so they are developing a database with active participation strategies in a Google classroom that they can all share together. They've been using that to modify lessons, and then obviously, I shared with you using the two applications, new digital resources in their teaching and in student learning. The same thing is happening, our outcomes for the New York State Learning Standards, sorry, their shared resources. The 6th or 8th teachers I shared with you are updating their final lessons, and they also did an audit in 6th through 8th grade, for the Computer Science and Digital Order of State. Finally, this year, Trish Husso from Erie Lumbosse comes in, and she, about every month, she has coaching sessions with them on active participation. So they can either go in, she have her observe what they're doing, they can observe her using active participation strategies with their students, she can do one-on-one coaching, she can do co-planning, or she can develop their content knowledge, anything, collaboration. And she comes in about once a month to work with that. And it's very differentiated, the sessions based on what they need. Once again, future plans, we're ready for the next generation math standards, continuing to plan to get all our ducks in a row, our arrows aligned, so our students are successful. And that's, yes? Questions?
I mean, like just yesterday, when I had your job, we were changing math curriculum, and here we are again.
Well, I was gonna say, I feel like you, we, yeah, I switched, and then started all over, so, but now it'll be done, full implementation for a few years.
I mean, it was a decade ago, but it's certainly interesting that math keeps changing over 10 years.
Yeah, there's certain content areas that cycle a lot and others that don't, so.
Well, it's always a pleasure to hear about the wonderful things you're leading, and it's invigorating for me to, you know, see this work in our district. We'll take a break from presentations from Lynn at the next meeting, but she'll be back in the second meeting in November to update us on our integrated co-teaching initiative, which I know we made a big investment in, thanks to your support, we'll get a chance to see how that's going in our fully integrated model with Lynn and Dr. Shan and Dr. Otto. So great job, thank you. Last but not least, this meeting once again coincides with New York State School Board Appreciation Week. So there's been some tokens of appreciation already displayed throughout the district. A few of them are social media posts, which I hope you've seen. Tomorrow, there'll be an editorial in the Amherst B. We have some news feature on our website, and we also have a token of our appreciation for your service on the main marquee on the Main Street sign at the front of the high school. In addition, there's also a small token of my appreciation for your commitment to our district and all your hard work and support, particularly over the last 19 months. I think the cohesive leadership that you demonstrate here, you know, trickles down into all aspects of our district, and it's allowed us to navigate some very difficult times over the last 19 months, and I'm thankful for that. So thank you. If you take a look at the card that was custom-made by Lori Sosenko with some of our student artwork, and we put some notes on there so you know where it came from, but that is, you know, a piece of artwork from one of our students that's actually hanging in our office, and then, you know, there's a note from the artist statement, as well as some additional things in there, so enjoy it.
There's a lot of enthusiasm, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, but my miss missing.
Oh, is that the one that we put something in, that doctor? Well, that is all we have tonight for the superintendent's report. I'll send you over a correction.
Thank you. Deb will need a motion for new business items.
Motion for new business items, E1, E3L, 2B through E, and 3G.
We have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, 1A through L, 2B through E, and 3G, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Mrs. Custody, do we have any follow-up action items?
No.
Then we will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll take a motion to convene to a code executive session. We already have a point of particular interest.
Do we have a second? All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Patrick.